Good evening, welcome to the Cost Town Planning Board. This is our regular meeting, the first of the month. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
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 So we'll have, normally we'll have our introductions.
We'll start with Dave.
Dave Pierce, I'm an alternate member.
Richard Freeman.
Barbara Griffin.
Tim Cerwles.
Tim Redmond.
Scott Ozan, a town engineer.
Joshua Douglas.
Philip Devanda.
Joanne Duffy, planning and economics director.
Thank you for everyone for being here tonight. Joanne, could you do item number two on correspondence and action items?
Sure. Item number two is request for recommendation to be forwarded to the Select Board for land acquisition of the open space land for the proposed project off of Agorn Drive, map six lot 54-1 as open space conservation land under the management of the Conservation Commission. Derek sent me an email saying that we needed an official memo from the Planning Board to the Select Board, and they'll be meeting on this on Monday, to state that the Planning Board is in favor of the open space going to the Conservation Commission. The Commission has already sent a letter, so the only other board he's waiting for is us. And there's going to be two hearings, they've already been scheduled, and then they have to wait another week after the second hearing before the Select Board can vote. A week to, a week to 10 days, I think it is. So I did speak with the applicants, engineer, and they were, they were okay with waiting until that time period. What do you mean they were okay? Well, remember when they were here, they said they didn't want to, want this to hold them up, and that if it did hold them up, they were going to just put it into a homeowners' association. Well, I wanted to make sure that he didn't feel that this was holding them up, and he said that no, because they still have other things they need to take care of. Okay.
There was a document on the table, not in the packet tonight, relative to that Anybody want to comment on this?
I'm, I'll probably vote in favor of it, but I wasn't able to find the minutes because my able, ability to negotiate around this website is zero late in the day.
The minutes from planning?
For, for conservation and what happened in regards to the selectmen's discussion, because I continue to have concerns about an accurate assessment of our ability to monitor and where, what the town is going to be on the bookboard. There's an issue, not that there have been a huge amount of issues, there have been some, and I couldn't find the minutes, so.
So I'm not sure about the minutes, but I did watch the Select Board's meeting, and there was some discussion and some concern about that subject. David Neiman, I believe he's here tonight. He also attended that meeting and explained what was happening, that they are putting together a management plan, that he's actively working on it now. So, but they did go ahead and schedule the hearings, so it looks like they don't have any big issues with it. In the meantime, like I said, the, the owner or slash applicant slash engineer, he speaks for the applicant, he said he was fine with the waiting for that date.
So does that mean we're not seeing it again?
No, no, they're coming back at our next meeting on the 24th. They'll be back.
So they're agreeing to a condition of a resolution in this manner?
Correct.
Okay.
So that they can go ahead, because if they were going to do a homeowners' association, they would need to provide us with documents. They'd be reviewed by our town attorney, and I'm not so sure that, that homeowners' documents aren't needed at all, because I don't know if there's anything else that that group of homes would need to maintain.
No, DPW is supposed to maintain the road, because it's going to be public and there's no playground or anything there.
Okay.
At least not as proposed currently.
Okay. Because some of them do do both, but in this case, it looks like they don't need that. All right.
So I need a motion from someone to comment or no comment. We need to do something, move the meeting on.
I'll make a motion that we have no comment on the proposal.
I'll second.
And I've chosen no comment, that the plan is still before us.
Motion to send no comment to the Board of Selectmen regarding this open space acquisition. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction? Motion passes. Joanne, we don't have minutes for tonight, we're going to get them for our next meeting.
We do not have minutes for tonight.
That's fine.
And we do not have a minute taker, and it's going on almost a year now.
So maybe our Selectmen's rep can join the chorus for hiring a minute taker that has been going on for, how long have we been complaining about this?
A year. Well, May will be a year that gap left.
May will be a year. There have been various attempts to try AI and AI or video, it takes just as long as somebody to do this. We need a minute taker.
Okay. So we've moved on from that. Any other, no old business, thanks Joanne, we're going straight to new business?
Yes, there's, there's no old business. It's just the acquisition, that was it. And as far as the upcoming meetings, I'm not positive that you'll see that application listed for May 8th, they still are working on their updates, so I'm not sure if they'll be ready by then.
Okay. So let's move on. New business is map 29 lot 36. Ask the applicants to come up to the table and wait until we, we ask them to speak. Joanne?
So this is an application for a multifamily site plan, and it's, what they're doing is they've, they've obtained the, the former Masonic Temple building over on Mountain Road, and they would like to turn it into a multifamily building. The existing building is 2,880 square feet, and they would like to add an addition off the rear for another 1,880 square feet. And then they'd like to convert the building into 12, total, total of 12 units. The units are on the smaller size, they range from 492 square feet to 743 square feet. And they did go to the zoning board and they received the variances that they had, that were required for this application. There is, they are complete with no regional impact with one waiver, and that would be for soil mapping standards.
Thank you, Joanne. Now, could I have a motion, please, regarding the application from the members of the Board?
I'll make a motion that the application for map 29 lot 36, as represented by staff, is complete with no regional impact and acceptance is subject to further consideration of the waiver request.
Second.
Any, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Motion passes. Do any Board members have questions for staff members before we begin this presentation? Seeing none, I'll ask the folks to identify yourselves and begin your presentation.
Sure. Good evening to the Board. For the record, I'm Jeff Merritt, I'm a professional engineer, a granite engineer, and I'm the civil site engineers for the project. We have a bunch of people here this evening in the project team. To my right, the board's left, this is Ray Belia. Ray is the applicant for the project. He's the gentleman that's contemplating purchasing the Masonic Temple. The end of the table, Chris Drescher, attorney with Corona Business and Zalinski, attorney for the applicant. And then in the audience is architect Kurt Lauer. And then Paige and Trevor Langley, who are the general contractors for the project, should be approved by the Board. Joanne gave you a quick summary there, I'll, I'll give you a little bit more detail into the project that we're proposing here. We have a site plan, obviously, for the Board, and then as Joanne mentioned, we have one waiver that we're seeking as well. Tell you a little bit about the property as it exists before I jump into the proposal. In our plan set, there is a survey.
If we have plans at the table, could you please rotate that so the people in the audience can see your plan, at least parallel to the wall, if not a little more to them? I think we can follow along because we have plans. Thank you, Jeff.
So if you flip to the survey plan in our plan set, it's right after the cover sheet, that shows the property as it exists today. I suspect everyone here knows where it is. We're right out the corner of Mountain Road and Knoll Crest Road. This is property that's currently owned by the Masonic Building Association. The last use, I believe, was the Lafayette Bible Lodge, there's a sign out there, but it's been owned by the Masonic Association for quite some time. This is the current survey of the property, the property is roughly three quarters of an acre in land area. This is also located entirely within the R1 zoning district here in town. The property was developed in 1970, so it's been this way for over 50 years or so. There's a single brick building on it, and access to the facility is actually off of both roads. There's a narrow curb cut off of Mountain Road, kind of to the south side of the property, and then along Knoll Crest, just about the entire frontage of the property on Knoll Crest is a curb cut. It's about 200 feet wide or so out there. Then there are some paved areas to the southeast and north of the building, and those are all parking areas. The parking area adjacent to Knoll Crest, if you're familiar with it out there, there's some nosing parking towards the building, which requires people to back out into Knoll Crest. And then, of course, there's a larger parking lot to the east, in the south. The south property line is actually the center line of Whittle Brook, and you can see that on our, our plan here. So that is Whittle Brook all the way to our south. There is a 100-foot surface water buffer from that Brook, and we put that on the plan. On the plan I have up here, we colored it in yellow, excuse me, in green, just so you can see where that 100-foot buffer crosses the property. It kind of runs through the middle of the existing building, that upper green line or that north green line. So, you know, a little over half the site is in that 100-foot buffer, the building and a bunch of pavement. And then there's a second 50-foot, excuse me, a second green line on the plan that I have right there, which is the inner 50 feet, that's that first 50 feet of the 100-foot buffer. And that doesn't have the building in it, but it has the access drive and a lot of the parking, as you can see off of Mountain Road. And then in terms of stormwater today, there really isn't any, a good portion of the property sheds towards Whittle Brook, and kind of just runs off the pavement into the Brook. Again, been developed since the 1970s, stormwater standards were a little different back then, but there isn't really much in terms of stormwater controls out there. So there are a lot of nonconformities with the property. There's some parking that's certainly within the front yard setback, there is some parking that backs out into the street, which we don't do today, and there's certainly no stormwater controls on site, but nevertheless, it's been developed since the 1970s. So our proposal, it is illustrated best on our, our site plan, so if you flip the sheet three of seven, can you play with that? This is our site plan. The proposal is to change the use of the building to a multifamily use. The building would be salvaged and repurposed. We are not proposing to tear it down, it's a nice building, nice brick building. The existing building would be converted to eight units, there'd be four on each floor. And then if you look on the plan, you'll see another rectangle next to the existing building, and that's a proposed addition of about 1,880 square feet, and that would have four more units in it, so two below, two above, for a total of 12 units on the property. Kurt Lauer will go through this in a bit, but I'll tell you a little bit about the units, but of the 12 units, there are 10 one-bedroom, one-studio, and one two-bedroom. The units range in size, 492 square feet to 743 square feet, intends to provide a different housing stock with a smaller unit size here in town. In terms of access, we're keeping the two access points that exist today, but we're making some improvements, if you will, especially to the Knoll Crest Road curb cut. So we would maintain our curb cut off of Mountain Road, right in the same location that it is today, and then we were proposed to line up a curb cut off of Knoll Crest across from Seduka Lane, and we would close off that 200-foot curb cut that exists today to something much more defined and conventional. And then, of course, the head, the head-in parking that backs into, backs out onto Knoll Crest, that gets removed as part of this, so we would remove that nonconformity. In terms of parking on-site, we have shown 24 parking spaces, one of those is a handicap space. You would end up with a reduction in impervious coverage as a result of this plan, so even adding the addition and reconfiguring the parking lot here, we actually reduce the on-site impervious area by using a more efficient layout. And the same can be said for the impervious coverage within the city's right-of-way. Because we're removing that head-in parking off of Knoll Crest, a lot of the paving that's in the right-of-way can be removed and that edge of the street can be reestablished. So this project ends up in a reduction in both on-site coverage and then off-site coverage. On the south side of the building, we noticed this hatched area, that's a small loading zone that we've provided on the site here. This is a use where we would expect to have delivery vehicles like, say, a post office vehicle, a FedEx, an Amazon vehicle, maybe a U-Haul or a pickup truck on a moving day. We're not looking for semis or those kind of things with this type of use. These are small, typical residential delivery vehicles, and that's what that area is for. The edge of pavement on the south side, next to Whittle Brook, it's not getting any closer to the, the Brook. It stays where it is, it does not further encroach. We are proposing some work within the buffer to the Brook. Obviously, about half of the property is within that 100-foot buffer, so it's kind of hard to do anything on this property without being in the buffer, but we are proposing some work within the 100-foot buffer. That includes the building addition, making improvements to the parking layout, and then, most importantly, we're proposing to make some improvements to the stormwater treatment for the site, where that exists today. Again, a situation where this is built in the 70s, we're trying to make it better, we're trying to make a effort to provide an enhanced level of treatment where it does not exist. Certainly not a perfect situation, because the site's already developed, you know, if we were going to do it over again, we'd probably position the building differently on the property, but that's not the, the option we have here. So the work within the first 50 feet of the buffer is something that the zoning board has to approve, and then, of course, this Board has authority over the work within the 50 to 100-foot section of that buffer. We did meet with the Conservation Commission before we actually went to the ZBA. We met with them at more of a conceptual level to say, hey, you know, this is the project, this is what we want to do within that 50-foot buffer, does it make sense to you, it makes sense to us? They gave a favorable recommendation to the zoning board. We told them that we would be back before the Conservation Commission, should we be successful at the ZBA. So we're scheduled to be back before the Conservation Commission on the 23rd of this month, where we can present the final design, if you will, and hopefully get another favorable recommendation to back to the Board with that. And we prepared a lighting design as part of the project, so if you keep flipping from the plan set to sheet seven of seven, that's a lighting plan for the property. There are two full lights proposed to light the parking lot. They are full cutoff fixtures and dark sky compliant and LED fixtures. And then we have similar fixtures on the building, a series of building-mounted fixtures along the facade of the new addition. And again, they're all full cutoff LED fixtures. If you keep flipping, there is the landscape plan, right after the lighting plan. We just want to touch base on that briefly. We've put some effort into dressing up the landscaping out here. Again, this is 1970s development, there is some landscaping out there, but not much, I would say. So we've taken an effort to substantially enhance the on-site landscaping. If you look at the eastern side of the property, I guess the southeast side, you'll note that we're proposing a solid fence there along with a row of eastern red cedars. That is intended to be, to help screen this use from the abutting property, or essentially our one abutter to the east. So we have that on the plan. And then we're also showing plantings around the building, along Mountain Road, and then along Knoll Crest as well. Some of those are plantings that are used to help screen some of the camp equipment that has, have to be installed for the project. And then on the end caps, especially out near Knoll Crest, we have some additional landscaping there, as well as within the stormwater pond, this is proposed to be a bio-retention pond for, again, to, to try to get some level of treatment out there, where that exists today, and part of that is planting within the pond with species that are tolerated. And then the last thing relative to the site plan is a waiver. We're seeking one waiver, and that is from section 6L, that is the site-specific soil mapping standards. That section of the regulation requires a soil scientist to map the soils on the property, and the purpose of the regulation is to ensure that the land is suitable for building purposes. We think the Board can consider granting this waiver, since there are specific circumstances relative to the condition of the land that indicate that the waiver will carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations. The, you know, it's kind of unique here that the property's already developed, we already know it's suitable for development, it's been developed for 55 years, there's not issues out there in terms of anything soil-related that we're aware of, so we think the Board can, can grant that waiver. I would also add that if we did do a soil mapping out here, the way it works is the soil scientist maps the land covers out there, augers down what's, what there is. The pavement in the building area would be mapped just as that, pavement in the building, and then the lawn areas would typically come back as urban land complex, because they're disturbed land. So often what you get back with a situation like this, in terms of the soil map, is areas that show pavement, building, lawns, or urban land, which is exactly what the survey does. So I don't think it would produce any sort of beneficial information to the Boards, we're seeking that waiver. If this was a virgin piece of land that hadn't been developed, then the parent soils could be mapped, and it may be valuable to the Board, but we thought we would ask the Board for that waiver, and we'd appreciate you considering that. And then last, but certainly not least, is building architecture. I'll, I'll move over for a minute and let Kurt speak about that.
As we said before, the building, the existing one we're going to keep as is for the most part, we are infilling a couple windows that exist, hoping to move those in to match the existing. The windows in the addition will match the existing windows. The addition siding of a kind of dark gray, a little color, to try and, we didn't want to go brown to match the brick, because you'll never get a vinyl siding color to match the brick, and it just looks off if they're off by a little bit, so we didn't want to go white, the white, you know, yellow color is too bright with contrast, so we just tried to have a subdued addition, kind of let it blend away as much as possible. Keeping asphaltued roof to match what's there now. That's about it, it's a pretty simple little addition.
Board members have questions for the applicant?
Um, I, Tim, I guess I sort of have, DPW made some comments, Joanne, I don't, um, has the applicant had a chance to see those, has, have you received any response to any of these?
Have you seen them?
We, I got them yesterday, actually.
Well, that's why I always ask.
We did, we got them and we read through them, I think we have some stuff we want to talk to Scott about, but all in all, I think they were good comments, I don't see how we can't work through them. We just need a little bit of time to kind of digest them.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there was anything major. I think the biggest concern I had was the stormwater one, about the height of the seasonal water table, or the elevation of it. And then I just had a question about how their trip generation, why they chose the method that they did. I think I know why, but I'd like them to explain it.
Okay. We'll get the traffic consultant to answer that.
Yeah. So yeah, there wasn't anything major, the majority of my comments were plan edits that will be easily cleaned up, or shouldn't be easily cleaned up, and then that stormwater one, but I'm confident they can figure something out.
Okay, and the lighting also, as part of that, you made a comment about lighting.
Yeah, so, which, the zoning ordinance, I don't think it got posted until today, Joanne, or pretty recently?
We received it yesterday from Derek, and it was posted yesterday, I think, but still not in the [inaudible].
Yeah, this application was received after town meeting, so.
But it was received after the changes were posted, right?
Yeah, which is why they weren't aware of the fact that the front, the front property, yeah, has the limitations, it's the side and the back view now, so.
I think we can fix that. We, a lot of times we light up the entrance driveway to have a little spillover, but if the regs have changed, let's, that we got to have point two there, slide the door and use the [inaudible].
Yeah, it's just, it's not updated on our website.
Because this is, it is now.
It is now.
But it wasn't when the plans were drawn.
Okay. Because this is going to substantially change, I mean, the traffic flow as experienced by a butter, just because the place has not been used, and the traffic flow is going to be a very different timeframe than it used to be when it was used actively as the lodge, which was for a number of years.
Okay. Anybody else?
No?
Yeah. On the landscaping plan, the southwest, southeast parking spaces have the, the buffer on the line with the houses. There's two parking spaces by the, the hatched area. There's nothing, no buffer in front of them.
That was a comment that, I think Joanne had made, that in her staff report, about extending the fence a little bit further to the southwest to help extend the buffer, was that your comment, Joanne?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think to address that, we would extend the fence a little bit further to the southwest there.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff? My comment concerning snow storage. It appears that you have a four to five foot area designated at the, at the end of where the cars are parked, between car parking and fence. Is that the total for all the snow storage?
You know, the, the snow storage, so it would be done around the perimeter of the parking lot, and obviously, if you have winters where it's very intense with snow, then it's similar to any other commercial site, where if the capacity on-site doesn't support it, then it has to be mowed off, and I think we might actually have a note on that, we do actually, it's no 18.
This is [inaudible]. This is not a very, lots not very convenient for a plow truck to go through.
It is.
No matter which direction you go, it's going to block in a line of cars.
It is. And like in our defense, if, if the building wasn't where it is today, you know, I think we could kind of work with that. This is a retrofit, obviously, so we kind of have to work with the placement of the building. But if the snow capacity on site is such that it can't be stored on site, it's going to have to be removed. Ray's the owner, he'll be managing the property and some of our [inaudible].
So I'm on the, what sheet, David, is it on?
Three of seven.
Number 18.
So where is it on the?
Next to the vinyl fence, it shows a little hatched area that's about four to five feet deep. I don't know how the snow.
Well, there was a comment and staff comments on this, so.
I don't know how the snow is going to get into that four to five foot area because there's going to be cars parked there.
Right.
Oh, and then I had a comment about pushing the snow into the vinyl fence.
Vinyl fences are very sturdy for pressure.
There, I had a comment on two of the other snow storage areas which are against the new, the new addition where the, those five spots are. If you look at the, the building elevation, I think it's like the last sheet, there's, there's a couple windows, they're like two feet off the, off the, so pushing snow that way is not ideal. And then when I looked at the, the landscaping plan, there's trees right there too, so that, that spot's not really practical either.
I guess we're not envisioning giant snow piles out here. You know, it's not a site, this isn't a Lowe's parking lot where there's a thousand extra spaces where you can store the snow in the parking spaces. So it's, it's a site that has to be managed and it has to be, the snow has to be removed if it can't hold this.
Yeah.
But there's certainly room for multiple storms to just plow it on the perimeter of the parking.
Trucking snow can get expensive, so hopefully you're aware of that.
So I don't have it right in front of me. I'd have to look through here, but the parking requirements for multifamily has changed due to the state changing their rules. And I believe it's only one and a half space.
Well, isn't it in the new zoning that you just gave something?
Yeah, I was just about to look it up.
Oh, okay.
So that's one thing. And then the other thing I'd just like to say is the zoning board approved this, the variances. And one of the things they put down here, which I'm not sure if they even have the jurisdiction to do this, is that each unit shall have no more than two occupants. So my question is, say, there's a couple that moves in and then all of a sudden they have a baby. What are they supposed to do if they have a lease? Move out? Like, that makes no sense to me.
Well, and in follow-up, I'm not sure that the wording of request number three matches what the intent was and what's on the plan in regards to parking and setbacks. I don't know why we're talking about the front setback when the parking overlap into setbacks is rear and side. I didn't.
Yeah, I don't know. That's, that's what they put in with, this came directly from their mo, their motion. So I'm not sure what they're doing, but just, some of it doesn't make any sense.
And, and just while I'm looking at it, maybe the, so the loading zone that they're, that they were talking about is this loading zone on the east side of the building, right?
South, south.
South, sorry. Okay. And this is only eight feet, right? Is that what the variance did? Because this looks like it's more than eight feet, so that's why I was a little confused.
The hatched area is eight feet.
Okay, it is, all right.
So multifamily with 10 or more units requires one and a half now, not two.
So that, and then is there a quarter space per unit for visitors? Is that what it says?
Yes.
So I think, I think we showed 20, I don't know, we showed 24, so I think it could go down to 21 and still be fine.
And then you'll have the guest space?
That includes the guests.
Okay, okay.
Because it would be 18 plus three, twelve.
Okay. So if that helps you not park as close to the fence and?
I think that would also mean, if I may, that there'd be extra parking spaces that are not utilized. We have more parking than we need under the ordinance, so I mean, some of those could theoretically be used for the snow storage as well.
And to access the five foot areas.
I don't think we're suggesting that you remove the parking spaces that you always need.
Yeah, it, I mean, like Attorney Director's saying, that there's, there may be extra, we never thought we needed 24. We know the code at, at one time said 24 was needed, but one and a half per unit was kind of where Ray's head was at and what we have seen in the past as well. So we always envisioned there being a little bit of surplus onsite anyways, so we can use that as for snow storage if needed. But again, it's, the intent is not to have giant piles, not to, it's not a [inaudible].
And this is a state law that's been in effect for a while, like I think since last year. We just caught up with it in March.
A question, and it's probably for Scott and the applicant, just because of my plan reading ability, even though they tell me this, these glasses should let me see clearly. On the east side parking along the brook, because there's no parking on that side of the building now.
There is.
Well.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much the same pavement [inaudible].
Well, I, there's pavement everywhere. That's why I thought the soil, the soil request, the soil waiver, I thought was like, well, yeah, I think we can go with that.
It's angled in towards the street. It's just, I think it's.
Right.
Similar to the.
So what, this is obviously going to be very different parking than has been there for quite a while.
Which comes out.
So what is the edge, you know, can you explain in layman's turn, Scott, or the applicant, what the edge of that parking is going to be? Because.
So that.
Are you asking about the peystone? Because that was a question I had, but then when I read the stormwater report after, I just don't know if it's the best thing for right on the edge of pavement.
Yeah, we're trying to kind of work with the, the land that we have and everything that we can, but the edge of pavement on the water side?
I think would be more the south side.
Doesn't change. That's one in the same.
I understand, but this is a huge change in use for the site. So the pavement may be the same, but it's a change in use. So I want to know what's happening for maintenance of that, particularly as we come off the snow discussion, because I know.
That was my concern, the peystone would get pushed around by plows. Is it, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, I'm talking, because it just seems to me this is just one, going to be one big role to, to the brook.
It's, that's the opposite of.
Yeah, it's kind of depressed and then so.
That's what happens today is it's one big sheet to, what we're doing is there's a, there's a belly at the, so you come, edge of pavement, and then there's a belly, and then it flows into a stormwater pond to collect it. So instead of letting it flow off-site into the brook, it's collected into a stormwater pond and then we use a filtration media.
Well, you've got the bio retention.
Exactly. So it's all part of that. And that, again, that's.
I couldn't tell what was happening at, what I would refer to as a mountain roadside.
Yeah, I understand. It can, it shows better actually on the grading and drainage plan sheet, or if you can follow kind of the flow arrows there. Gives an indication of how the water would flow, and it flows over to the bio retention pond. So we basically, we kind of berm that up, if you will, so that the water just can't directly discharge into the brook as it does.
Immediately after the parking area, there's a slight swale and that drains into the retention.
Exactly. Heads to east to the retention.
It's a pretty shallow pond, too. It's not like some giant hole in the ground. It's just a couple of feet, if I remember correctly.
Three or eight, four or seven five.
It's shallow because we're right next to the brook. You know, the brook's not too far below us. And to Scott's comment, you know, there's, there's the water table and then there's the seasonal high water table. And our intent was, you know, again, we can't raise this whole site. You got to work with what you have, but we can do better. So our intent is to, majority of the year, the seasonal high water table isn't way up top. It's down at the [inaudible]. So our intent is to put a filter media in there so that the water gets filtrated and treated for the majority of the year. Some, some times of the year, like right now, the water table's a little bit higher and it's going to be not perfect, but it's substantially better than what exists today, where essentially nothing exists today. And that was what we talked with the Conservation Commission about doing, was making an effort to do the best we could given the situation we have. And again, if this was a site that wasn't developed, we could certainly do things differently. Pick the building up and [inaudible] things, but it's just not the case out there.
Okay, it's in regards to the variance, sorry, Tim, I'm just going, I'm asking, because I'm going back to the variances. I noticed that there were five people that voted at the zoning board and then four voted on the exceptions and the variances, but five voted on the one person abstaining. Was that Ms. Langley because her company is doing the work on it?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, do we have a copy of the variance request as to the, what was submitted to the zoning ordinance in the planning file?
No, but I, I mean, I could certainly get it.
Well, the reason I'd like it is sort of what you sort of mentioned before was, I don't know, what kind of a note would we put on this plan for the condition of two occupants?
I don't even know if that's legal. I mean, that's what they voted on, but was there any discussion?
I think, if I may, I also, I kind of agree with you, Joanne. I'm not, I'm not sure they had jurisdiction to do it, but I think the applicant was okay with accepting it because, I mean, we've gone on record saying these aren't going to be the biggest units. And that's by design. I mean, that's, that's to appeal to a more diverse, you know, group of people that, other than single family homes, generally we were thinking younger people, you know, starting out in life, that kind of thing. So it was sort of geared towards a single person or a couple. And I think the applicant was okay and he went on record sort of saying that, but I'm also inclined to agree with you. I'm not sure they had the jurisdiction to make that restriction, but we were okay.
And there's absolutely no way to enforce it.
But it would seem to me that that was a substantive basis for them granting the variance for the number of units.
I think it was more for the size of the units because they were smaller. And they made, they had a condition on there that they could not be larger than 800 square So they didn't want to see it.
It came up after that.
Yeah, I think they, they also did come up with that after the fact or during sort of deliberations and.
During the public comment.
Yeah, but he was, again, he was fine with the restrictions.
Well, I mean, you may be fine with the restrictions, but from a planning board standpoint, if I'm approving a plan that has conditions on it and I have no way to enforce it or monitor it, I don't know what I do.
Yeah.
Which brings me back to my other question, and maybe counsel has got a comment on this as to, I'm, what were they talking about with the parking? Because your parking in the setback is on the side and back, not in the front.
Well, I think if I, if I remember, we were sort of, first of all, we were improving the.
Yeah, but the variance, improving or not improving would go to the, the request being granted, but so why, why is there only discussion about the front yard when there's really no parking in the front yard?
Because I think the, if you read that section of the ordinance, I think it says that parking in the front yard is prohibited.
The front yard setback.
Exactly. So it's between the front property line and the setback line. So while we took out the majority of that by getting rid of the parking at the front side of the middle street, there's a little bit within the front yard setback, which is right on.
Yeah, on Knoll Crest, there's like.
There's a side yard though.
It's labeled, it's labeled as front.
It's front.
And so as mountain, they're calling mountain and Knoll Crest both fronts.
Right. And here and here.
Which they, doesn't the zoning ordinance let them choose one to be the front?
Yeah.
You can't have both be the front.
Yeah, both are not the front. What's the [inaudible]?
You have to pick one for your sideline and pick one for your front.
Yeah, I think that's the way our ordinance is written.
Well, either way, you still, it didn't matter which one you pick.
Yeah, exactly.
You still need, you still can't have parking in the front yard.
The spots over here and this [inaudible].
But they're pretty consistent.
Doesn't matter.
Pretty consistent.
I guess they got the variance. Kind of a moot point.
I think they got the variance and a lot more.
Joanne, you usually have a list of conditions, which summarizes all of the comments from departments. It's not in the packet.
That's because.
Is that something you're going to do with the next session?
Yes, that's because it's being continued.
So when, I'm looking at your detention pond. I'm reading the elevations, the proposed elevations, and I went to D3 or 4 for the test pit data. And it looks like you're setting the floor of that pit, that test, that pond at the seasonal high water table, is that correct?
Correct. With that period seven.
Is that by design?
Yes. So again, there's.
Explain that then to everybody why you're having it so high.
So again, there's water table, which is the static elevation of the water. And then there's where it seasonally wicks up sometimes. And there's an elevation there called the seasonal high water table. So it's not necess, the water table, the seasonal water table isn't always there during the year. It's there sometimes in the spring, sometimes it's not in the, in the summer, that kind of stuff. So the intent here is to make the situation where there's no stormwater treatment better. And so what we've done is we've set the bottom of this basin such that we can collect all this water in a shallow basin. We've specified a media which will provide treatment through it, acknowledging that the bottom of it is at the seasonal high water table. And so in the spring, it may be up to the bottom with seasonal high. But in the summer and the fall and, you know, the rest of the year, the water table would be down below. So again, we're making a situation much better. Again, it's not perfect, but it is working with what we have. If we could redo this site and lift the whole thing, we would, but that's just not, it's just not a possibility here. And our discussion with the Conservation Commission was that we were going to try to do the best we could here to provide an enhanced level of treatment where nothing exists. And if that's 11 months of the year grade, if it's 11 and a half months of the year grade, if it's 10 months of the year grade, anything would be better than what's there now. Thank you for that.
Our regs as they stand don't actually require treatment, so it is a bonus.
The treatment, see, here's the funny thing is that if, if you follow just the regs, you don't need anything because we actually have a net decrease in pavement out there. So we show a decrease without doing anything. The, the intent here is the treatment element, which isn't discussed in the stormwater regs with the town, at least not yet.
It was a nice draft that's going to make it a little more difficult.
Yeah, but you know, it's, I think it's important. I think the Conservation thought it was important. The applicant was certainly willing to do it. And again, it's going to provide an increased level of treatment where none exists today. Even if that's 11 months of the year or 10 months of the year, it doesn't matter. It's increased from what's today and that's the whole spirit of it.
You also show a paves loose way in the exit that feeds back towards, I guess, the existing drainage on Knoll Crest. Could you explain how that works for everybody?
Yep. So surface flow and then think of a paves loose way like a break in curb that allows the water to go through it. And then it goes overland into the catch basin, which is where it goes today. Pretty low maintenance. There was one comment Scott had in there and we can talk off.
Yeah, just kind of pave it, teardrop down to it, so we.
From our parking lot or?
From, from our road because that was our road drainage.
So like parallel to Knoll Crest? Is that what you're asking?
Kind of perpendicular from Knoll Crest. So like this teardrop of kind of like asphalt so that when there's snow curb, hopefully our guys dig it out and then there's asphalt for the water to follow because, you know, it heats up and.
You want a space for it to get down.
Exactly. Our road water is what I'm concerned about, not so much your site.
Yep, I got you.
Technically, that is town drainage.
Yeah.
That's all an infiltration system. I don't think it infiltrates much there, but.
Wasn't that done a few years ago?
It's quite a few years ago. I don't, I don't have a specific date, but it was, oh, probably a long time.
I thought there was work done down there, but maybe there was a problem that had to be dealt with.
Oh, maybe, yeah. Yeah, all that was installed. It's a big 36 inch pipe that connects the system on the other side of the street and that's basically holds the water. There's no outlet to that system.
I think it's only outlet is infiltration, right?
Exactly, yeah.
And when we did test pits out there, we did find good parent soil. It's a predominantly Windsor soil, which is a well-drained soil, which shouldn't be too much of a surprise since there's a brook there, but it likely does drink that water, which is good.
There's a comment I'd like to talk to you about is your, I applaud the fact you'd like to make it a one-way traffic pattern. Safety, I guess, would be the biggest part. How are you going to direct people into your one-way traffic pattern from Mountain Road? Are you going to install any signage or what are you going to do with that?
We hadn't proposed signing that.
But you have been behind the signs on.
Correct. We want to sign it so that people don't go in the wrong way.
Right.
Again, most of the people that, you know, are coming here know this facility. That's their home. Visitors, you know, have an address off of Mountain Road, so we expect it to not need an entrance sign because it's the address off of Mountain Road. But we did want to make sure that people weren't trying to enter off of Knoll Crest and kind of go reverse with the traffic. That's why you see subdued on enter signs often on the reverse.
So in a follow-up to the exit, because to the extent this site has been used over the last few years, it's sort of a mishmash along Knoll Crest, right? It's not, that's a technical, that's the way.
It's a sea of pavement.
If you were driving at night and didn't know where the road was and made a turn there, it would be a little harrowing. So when you come out there, Sudoka Lane and that housing association is sort of on a different angle from the lights, so I don't see much light wash from that because we often talk about landscaping or moving stuff. What's going on at 3428? Do you anticipate that the light wash will go on that site or not? Because this is a big change in what the traffic is going. And I can't remember what's on that log.
If you can, you probably can't see it, but you can look on the overview point of the cover. There's an aerial.
Yeah, come on.
Actually, I have a bigger version.
All right, so I can see Sudoka. Oh, all right, so it's at the other end of that entrance, is what you're telling me. Okay. South Mast Road is. It's actually a South Mast Road, okay. Then Sudoka has nothing.
Yeah, I knew Sudoka.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking for it.
Clear, Barbara?
Yeah.
Well, I, I heard your argument for not putting entrance signs on Mountain Road, but I have zero faith in any Amazon driver to even pay attention to the signage and actually go in the entrance to this project. So not that you're going to have a gate there to stop them from coming in, but I think that if we were to poll the residents a year later, they'll, you'll see all the Amazon trucks facing the wrong way in the loading zone.
They're just going to park in the travelway on Mountain Road.
They can do that too.
We could add an enter here sign if that's what the board's after. We didn't think it was necessary, but if you guys think it is, you know, I don't think we're opposed to a sign.
Well, the address for these units is going to be Mountain Road, right? So when Amazon does it, it will not be Knoll Crest.
That's true.
Is there a place to drop the mail?
It's Amazon. What's that?
Is there a place to drop the mail?
There is.
And where is the mail on the.
It is right to the right of the crosswalk. You see that small rectangle?
Yes, okay.
Yep, it's a mail station. Should label it. Yeah, there's a pedestal there for them.
Thank you, seeing it's this rectangle.
Any more board members have questions for the applicant at this time?
Just for confirmation, and I think you said it already, the peystone. I have no concern that that's going to wash off into the brook at all.
It's definitely not going into the brook because we have that swale which leads into the bioretention area. We're not married to the peystone. It was just an.
It's your pre-treatment.
It was just an element to try to get some pre-treatment out there. If the board has concern with it, it's fine.
What's the grade on that?
A grade on.
Like to go towards the brook. Like if you have water that's flowing or whatever, you have a lot of snow, sometimes it'll still pick up that peystone like travels all over the place.
So if it did pick up the peystone, what if we do, we run to the east, parallel with the spaces, and then it would deposit it into the bioretention area? So you can picture, right now, what happens is it has a direct path into the brook. And so we're actually putting a divot or a swale kind of in the bottom there, so the water has to hit the swale and then distract it into.
How deep is that swell?
Under a foot, eight inches to a foot, something like that. Small building.
Kind of my concern, like that peystone is not great, no matter where you put it.
You're not going to curb that edge of the parking lot, are you?
No.
So I would say that from my experience, if you put peystone in that ditch, the first person that drives off the edge, they're going to get stuck in it, and it's going to be a problem. So I would suggest you consider an alternative stone for a replacement.
And if you get some crazy plow guy or whatever, they're going to push that all over the place too.
It's probably going to be lower than the pavement I'm thinking for.
That's fair.
But someone will get stuck in it. All right, you'll have chances to ask questions again, unless nobody has anything pressing right now. I will move to the public hearing and. At this time, a public hearing is open, so if anybody who isn't a butter or who would like to speak regarding this application, you're welcome to come up to the microphone. Please state your name and your address. And once again, we don't have a minute taker, so we'd ask that you speak clearly and give your address clearly, please.
My name is Hugh Smith, and I own 12 Knoll Crest, which is the abutting property, which would be the other side of the fence they're talking about. And obviously, nobody wants a 12-unit apartment complex next to their single-family home, a single-family residential neighborhood. However, I think they're trying to do the best they can with the building that they have to work with. I have a concern over the seasonal runoff of the high table of water. I do get a trickle of water in the basement. Some pump kicks on very rarely. I'm concerned when you dig a hole next door and you scoop that out, that you're going to end up raising the water table, a lot of seats at its own level, and we're going to have more water in the basement. I'm concerned about the traffic coming out in the morning or later at the end of the day. The traffic is terrible. Mastro is a nightmare, as we all know. I have a concern over the noise level. I was the one that called at a college dorm when we were at the variance people because when you have five units that are 400 something square feet and then five units that are 500 something square feet, and then two units that are 600 or so square feet, those are small units. And once you rent to one or two people and you're going to have all their friends and they're going to, they're going to market to young people. Everybody deserves a break, but at the same token, young people have all their friends. They come and go all over the night. This has been peaceful and quiet for years. So I even asked if it could be 55 on up. First, I asked if you could sell it to a church or you could sell it to some other organization and keep the structure the way it is instead of turning it into a multifamily apartment building. But if you are going to vote in their favor and turn it into a 12-unit apartment building in a residential, single-family neighborhood, then can we possibly do something to curtail the noise and the traffic and the turning it into a college dorm by making it 55 on up? Look at the perfect avenue for people that are older. We can walk down on the sidewalks downtown. We can go to the hardware store. We can go get pizza. We can go get Chinese food, okay? We can go over to Sully's and get the groceries, and some of your seniors don't drive. They don't drive often. We're not going to have two cars per unit. They go to bed at nine o'clock at night. We're not going to have, I'm a senior. You got me up late tonight. It just doesn't make sense to take a residential, single-family neighborhood and put a 12-unit apartment building catering to young people next door. Maybe halfway medium is if we have to approve it, but we have to live with this building turned into a 12-unit apartment building than an organization that uses very rarely, has been minimal traffic over there for years, okay? The builder seems to be a very nice man. I've met him and talked to him. I think his attorney does a wonderful job as a speaker. If I was in his shoes, I'd hire him too. But I'm the abutter on the other side of the fence. There isn't a fence there. I can afford to buy my own fence. Leave me alone. But now I just happen to be the exact person right there, so I'm the one that affects the most. And I think that the town should do something to protect us as residents of the town. I wouldn't want to be on the board. You guys are here till late at night. It's none, you don't get paid a dime. Seriously, my hat goes off to you. But at the same token, how about protecting the neighborhood and trying to keep it in the character it is now? It's a residential, single-family neighborhood. I was amazed that it made it through a variance. We won't get into that part, though. So at this point, is there something that we can do if you absolutely, first of all, the water table is an issue. The traffic is an issue. The noise level is going to be an issue. The lighting's going to be an issue. It's going to be lit up like a Lowe's parking lot or whatever instead of, it is. You're going to have all lights. And we don't, we're not subject to all this information ahead of time. They sent you a letter in the mail saying, appear, tell us what you think. We're going to have attorneys that go over and explain all this to them. So at this point, I have several issues. Now it's going to be lit up bright. You don't have your privacy in your house then. You're going to have people coming and going all the time. I believe we're going to raise the water table by digging a hole and making the water even higher. I think we're going to increase traffic. I think the noise level is going to be out of control. And the reason that it was two people per unit is I had asked that if they're going to approve the variance, and we have to take a 12-unit, then because these units are so small and not turn into a college dorm to that degree, then let's approve, if you're going to approve it, approve it as no more than two occupants per unit. Builder agreed, and the variance was approved that way to carry with the unit, not with the owner. So now we're restricted to, if there's 12 units, you're restricted to no more than 24 people. I don't really want 24 people living next door, okay? But I understand what he's trying to do. So the lighting, maybe the board is more familiar with the lighting, and you can review it and kind of protect me a little bit so it doesn't turn into a Lowe's parking lot. Water table-wise, I'm sure that people on the board are a lot wiser than I am. They're going to understand it, do what they can to protect us. We're still going to have a 12-unit apartment building next door with a noise level. People are probably going all the time. If we have to have a 12-unit, can we at least make it 55 on up? That curves your traffic problem. It curves your noise problem. It curves the number of cars that are coming and going. You don't have people in the middle of the night. You don't have all their friends partying. And I think it's perfect for seniors walking downtown with all the amenities that we offer in the little gobstown village. There's sidewalks. Be better off. You get the pizza parlor, you get the Chinese food, you get the hardware store, you get Sully's. Some of them don't drive anymore. If I owned that building and was turning it into a 12-unit, I'd ask for it to be senior housing. They don't move. They move in and they stay for 10 years. They pay their rent on time. There's no drama. And at the same token, you have limited cars, limited noise, and they don't abuse the properties. They take care of them. They have, they have pride. Old school. So if you do have to approve it, can we approve it as a 55 on up? And that take the sting out of having a 12-unit next door to us? And take the sting out of everybody in the neighborhood? I didn't go door-to-door notifying everybody and asking 40 people to come here tonight. I just came as a gentleman, voice in my opinion.
Mr. Chair? What was the gentleman's name again? Because you're not on the abutter's list.
Hugh Smith.
Smith.
Smith for vocal trust.
It's just, he's just not, he said 12 Knoll Crest. It's not listed.
Yeah. There's a wrong name on it.
Yeah, only if it's surveyed, she has the right name.
Anybody else want to get up and speak at this time, please?
Hi, my name is Jessen Carroll. I live at One Car Court, which is the property that abuts across Mountain Road the whole length of the current building and the proposed building. I do not have a solution, but just see this at the time. I do agree that I think, I like to see that we are proposing restoring the building and making it use, but I do have concerns about the number of units similar to Hugh, is that what you mean? Similar to Hugh and what that will do primarily to traffic on that road. I would add a component that Hugh didn't mention, but in my time in my property, Mountain Road is very popular for turning slowly and going very fast up and down. And hearing how you get in and out of the property, it could become risky with additional cars and tenants coming in or crossing at the, at the crosswalk there. I'm also concerned about the noise and the lights. I'm very blessed, and I have a large property that has a lot of land right there, but we enjoy our time outside. And this has the potential to really impact that with lighting and noise. So my, I also, I think, learned from this. I do have some concerns. I trust that we're doing the right things, but my property has the stream. Once it goes across Mountain Road, that borders my whole property. So hearing that we might have, and I'm not a water expert, plow expert, any of those types of things, but that there might be more water, waste, any of those types of things that could impact the brook and make its way into my property is of interest to me. So I just wanted to take the time to, to share those. I don't have a solution, and I'm sorry if I'm talking, it was supposed to come one. I do like your solution, but I also see an opportunity for families just getting started to live, but I'm concerned with the size of the, the units that bring that number, definitely in the 20s.
What was your name again?
My name is Jessen Carroll. J E S S E N. Thank you. My husband is, well, he is Jeremiah. We own One Car Court.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? This is going to have a second meeting, so there will be another public hearing. At the second meeting, it's not a one-and-done public hearing. No one else is going to speak?
May I just, a quick couple of comments, what I heard, if that's all right, Mr. Chair?
Uh, no, not at this time. None of butter. Anybody else want to speak, dits in a butter? Okay, then, for tonight, we'll close the public hearing. All right, applicants can come on back up again if you prefer to. Several points were raised, and I made some notes, and I'm going to ask our staff or I'm going to ask for regulations-wise and if other comments, I will allow the applicants to speak to. Joanne, could you please address the request that we require this to be a 55 or owner over a building complex? So could you please address that statement?
So it's not up to the planning board to decide to change the application and turn it into a 55 and older. That's something the owner or the applicant would be doing when they first submit. And I think this building is a two-story with stairs, no elevator, so I'm not sure how conducive it would be for elderly or 55 and older. I shouldn't say elderly because I'm in that category.
I just wanted to address the zoning requirement.
It's not a planning board discretion area. It's not a planning board choice. It's just something that happens if the applicant chooses to do so.
All right, so that's one concern I wrote down. I'm going to refer to the applicant engineer about the light, the question of the lights.
Yep. We do have a lighting design there. Our intent's to meet the town's lighting code. Part of that code says that they have to be full cutoff fixtures, which means that they don't shine light out, they shut, they shine light down. The other thing it says is that. The other thing it says is that there can be no light trespass greater than .2 foot candles at the property lines.
Could you please put the lighting page up for the folks to see what you're talking about? And show them the candle numbers that you have on your report.
It's hard to read from there.
All right.
It's hard to read.
Well, he can point to zero.
It's, they've managed on the plan to say it's .1 over on 2935.
I just want him to point out where the limits of the light will be returned to zero again.
Yeah, so if you look at the plan, there's 0.1, 0.2, 0.1. Those represent the fractions of a foot candle spilling over the property lines, and we've maintained it along that self-property line such that we're less than 0.2 over that line. We do need to address the comment that the town engineer mentioned where the code has changed, so we also apply that to the front there. So we'll address that, but in terms of our one and only abutment to the southeast, we have light levels that are less than or equal to the town's.
Are you able to reduce that to zero over, over the property line?
I don't know. We can check.
I'm checking, you're just looking at it for the board.
I'd also add to the board and to the abutters that the lighting design doesn't necessarily take into account the vertical screen that would be there, whether it be a fence or landscaping. So it's fairly conservative in, in the numbers that we show, and it's done by design. So it would likely be better than what's shown because of those elements aren't taken into consideration.
Can you also explain about the, how the seasonal water table and your excavation for the, for the detention area could possibly affect their water levels in their basement next door?
Yeah. First off, we're downstream from that property. But secondly, that, nothing that we do is going to impact the elevation of the water table out there, though. The elevation of the water table is dictated by lots of other things in the area, including Littlebrook because it's so close by. What we're talking about infiltrating is small, and it is negligible to the overall area.
Do you, in your professional opinion, do you think any pollution from the detention area that spills into Littlebrook is going to create downstream pollution to the neighbor that is on Car Court?
No, opposite of that. I would say that the discharge today untreated into Littlebrook creates some sort of pollutant loading in that brook, and has done so since the 1870s.
And this, you cuss a little.
What we're proposing to do is add a filtration system to treat what is currently going into the brook. So if anything, our project would enhance the quality of the stormwater and the quality of runoff downstream of us.
Any other board members have anything they'd like to ask the engineers at this time? Question?
Barbara.
Landscape plan. And I do note that you have certainly more than satisfied the landscape plan requirements. In regards to the neighbor on Knoll Crest Road, it's a little hard for me to tell what's going on because there's not a real clear existing conditions one, and the overview that you've got doesn't tell me what's there for screening now. It looks like you're proposing to leave a lot along that corner. So I'm a little confused about the plant, there's, that's the six-foot-high fence because that's what's allowed, is six-foot-high. And I know Joanne has made a comment about extending it. And where is the light pole on that side? If I, if I look at the landscape, stay on that.
In the center of that long parking lot.
It's that little symbol.
That little symbol there at the back of the parking lot.
Right. And how high is that?
20 feet.
Okay. So you have a six-foot fence and a 20-foot-high, and granted, it's downcast, and it will be turned with the shelf at the back.
Yeah. The lights today, they have lenses in them, so they're directional in that they're, they dictate where the light shines as opposed to the old floodlights that you shoot by now. So it's much different, but there's a 20-foot pole there, there'd be a six-foot solid fence, and then there would be a cedar hedge behind that, which eventually would mature to higher.
So the cedar hedge is on which side? This is where I'm going.
The abutter side.
Which side? The abutter side?
Yep.
Okay.
Behind the final fence.
And so the owner is going to maintain that, or the abutter is going to maintain that?
That's part of our site plan approval, if we were to get approval. So the landscaping would be maintained by the, our, the applicant.
And what is the existing buffer between the end of the shrubs that you're putting in in Littlebrook? I just don't know. I can't picture what's in that corner.
So there, it's thin. It's not a thick year-round vegetation, if I remember correctly, whereas the cedar obviously would be something that's year-round. Joanne's comment about extending the fence further west, or west, will do that, and then we'll probably have to extend that cedar hedge further that way as well.
Because where's the next light pole as you go around? Oh, it's not until...
You've got that one by the crosswalk.
It's in the center of the back of that long runway that he spelled.
There's got to be another one, I would think, somewhere because of the crosswalk.
No, you don't need one at every crosswalk. That's not a requirement.
I just didn't think that the, looking at the lighting plan, that it went that far through the crosswalk. Okay, so there's only two light poles that you're talking about?
There's two light poles on that side. There's a third light pole on the small tray of parking that is next to the building, and then there are building-mounted lights.
Okay, so there's only three poles.
So let's talk about those poles, then. Is it feasible or, or not that those poles could have something that would reduce the wattage after a certain time at night? We dealt with this with another applicant in Finnardville, where we actually have them turning off those lights at a certain point at the time because it's not an apartment, well, they do have apartments there. And we allowed them to use the wall pack units on the building for safety, for people to access the building. So if you would consider talking with your, with your folks there about the possibility of putting a timeframe on those being on up until pick a time at night, which you think would be appropriate for discussion, and then allow the wall pack units on the building to be the security lights for people to use the stairs and get in and out of the building safely.
We have done that on some other projects where we put lights on the, on a timer, and exactly as you said, we'll use the building-mounted lights for the security purposes.
They would stay on all the time, that's fine.
Yeah, but then the ones...
Because they're different types of lights.
Yeah.
Different. So just consider that for, for a comment based on the public comment tonight.
Yep.
I don't know if you can do about noise. I, I think noise is noise. We don't have any control over noise. The traffic was brought up as well, and the engineer, are you satisfied with the traffic?
I had some, I had a comment, so I will tell the public that the standard practice for determining how many trips are generated from multi-use family is, or really any new development, it typically comes out of a manual called the IT manual. And the numbers that it, it, you typically see out of multifamily housing aren't, aren't gigantic numbers. It's just how it is. They, they, how this is generated is they take a big sample set of multifamily housing, and they project it on a graph, and they make a best-fit line, and that's the way that is the standard practice for projecting traffic in the peak hour and the total traffic for the day. If I recall, it's a pretty small number for the peak hour. In the morning, it's five cars; in the evening, it's six; and for the total weekday, it's 82 trips. So not huge numbers. I do, I am aware that when you're at Mountain Road and you need to take a left, it's a, it's, it's not easy to do. So in the peak hour, there's going to be four or five more cars trying to make that movement. They may, they may be going right as well, so it's hard to say, but those numbers don't really put the intersection into failure, is, is what I think I'm trying to, to get at, so.
Well, the calculated impact of traffic is not at a level that the planning board could require anything to be done off-site.
I, I think that's a good way to put it, yeah.
Any board members have any more questions at this time? We will, we, we can discuss the waiver without acting on it tonight, if anybody would like to speak in, in terms of the waiver. It seems like a fairly standard request, which we have considered in the past. With site-specific soil mapping for a, a site that's already there, it seems unnecessary. They do have soil data for the test pits, which will back up their drainage calculation for the, for the detention area. That's basically the only real purpose of identifying soils on the site, so. I don't know, I'm not going to vote on it tonight because we don't generally vote on waivers until the end of the application after the second public hearing. But I don't, I don't have to deal with it at the time. Are there any outstanding issues, Scott or Joanne, that these folks need to be aware of before they come back for another meeting?
No, just what was mentioned tonight.
And you have, they have your comment list, Scott?
Yes.
Now? And I'm hoping that you guys can work them out prior to another public meeting so that we can act on your recommendation from the town engineer's aspect.
There's one other tiny thing that I jotted down tonight that, for the, just adding gravel shoulders to where we cut the pavement of the road so that...
That's a, that's a foot.
Yeah, it's, it's, it just popped into my head.
Got it. Any other board members have anything they'd like to see this applicant address prior to coming back?
Just one question. One question. How far down are you going to take the fence line on the plan? To, to the west. You said you were going to extend it.
Yeah, you need to, we'd like to see you extend it so that headlight wash from the other three parking spaces can be mitigated against lots of 2935.
We'll, we'll extend it past those...
Well, to the hash mark, so the headlights for the vehicles parked in the handicap spot will also not wash onto that property?
Okay, we'll draw a line straight out from there and extend the fence.
You can put it at an angle if you want, if you want to. But it would be, it would be closer to the spirit and intent of the ordinance to prevent headlight wash from going to the neighbors' property.
Trying to be good neighbors, maybe.
And you'll show that on a subsequent plan, of course?
We shall well.
So you're going to take it out to the handicap spot as well, huh?
Basically. Draw a line straight out from the handicap spot, or extend it down that way so that any lights there would hit that.
Have anything for us, applicants? Are you good to go? You guys good to go?
Yes, no, that's great. We appreciate the input.
Before you close it, can I just mention one more thing? They do have a wetland functional assessment that they provided, and the board needs to accept it because it's coming in as a second request or relief from the outer 50-foot of the wetlands or surface water. So you need to, like, vote on that as well separately.
So it's not that we need to make a motion to accept this report. We need to make a motion when we do our approvals to deal with the issue of the...
Correct. So if you could read this, excuse me, you could read this between now and the next meeting, that would be great.
Is that, is that a conditional use permit?
No, it's a separate thing. It's called relief from the outer 50 feet. It's a separate form, separate request.
As compared to conservation, which is...
And conservation will be reviewing this there, at their 23rd, the April 23rd meeting. So we'll hear more about this report then, too.
So do you have a preference for coming back? We have a, a very, very big meeting on the 24th with a, with a 46-lot open space subdivision, which is going to be in several amount of time. And then the May 8th application apparently is not going to be coming in because they probably won't be ready, but if, if May 8th is good for you, or if it doesn't work for your schedule, you need to let us know so we can schedule a date certain for you.
And you would be scheduled first because you're old business.
What is your deadline for submission of materials for an upcoming meeting, Joanne?
I believe tomorrow is the deadline for...
I'm going to give you a little problem.
Well, he doesn't have, he doesn't need a deadline for that. I'm talking about the other application if they do decide.
She doesn't know what the agenda is.
But the, because they're being continued, we just need to have their application by, like, the Wednesday or Thursday before the packets need to go out. The packets go out the Thursday before the meeting. So, so basically two weeks before the May, the May 8th meeting, whatever date that is.
What about plan amendments, Scott? Do we, does that have to be submitted for, for things like...
That's what I'm referring to. It's like, we have to get the amended plans by that date.
Yeah, that's, that's...
We've oftentimes allowed them to be staffed to address them if it's simple and the board approves it.
Well, I mean, I'd say the, the issue is the applicant's trying to figure out what meeting he wants to come back for. It's April 24th or May 8th. I'm sure he doesn't want to go past May 8th. Conservation meets the 23rd, so... So we would need it by, May 1st is when we mail the packets, so we would need it by the 24th of April in order to get our comments back to, back to Jeff by the meeting.
That's for the May 8th meeting.
Correct. Yeah, that's right, isn't it?
Yeah, essentially, your packets are due after the planning board meet, the day after the planning board meeting for the next meeting.
So packets go out the first, and we would need to have everything...
I'm on vacation that week. That's April vacation.
Oh, it is.
So the 20, the 28th and the 2nd, I'm gone, so.
So how about the 7th?
May the 8th. You want to have a special meeting just for you?
Just for us.
Yeah, forget it.
So you leave the 28th...
No, I'm just saying the week before would...
What I'm trying to get to is, what I'm trying to get to is...
He's getting on, they're getting on the, the May 8th agenda. That's what we have just committed. Eric can take a look at it, can he?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if they get it to me the 24th, this is a small enough plan set that I would hopefully be able to do it Thursday.
There were huge DPW comments, so...
Only address the comments to your satisfaction. That's the most important thing.
If we get an update from Scott at the meetings?
Yeah, that could be the case, too.
I feel like I'm telling them the wrong date, though.
Maybe my comments don't make the packet.
I think it's actually, because, no, no, that's right, because the packets...
Joanne's confused. Gmail it or mine.
I'm confused. The packets go out the first.
Well, I said a better...
Yeah, it is the 24th.
It's the 24th.
So we'll do the, the May 8th meeting, and then we'll try to get everything back to you guys by the 24th so that you can re-review and have comments for the May 8th.
Okay, so they've agreed to May 8th, and we don't need to worry about waiving the 65-day clock at this point, Joanne?
No.
Okay.
Motion to continue to May 8th.
I have a motion from Barbara to continue the meeting second by... Any discussion on the motion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The potential motion passes, we'll see you May 8th.
Appreciate you, all the board.
Thank you.
You're in business for tonight, Joanne?
I just have one question before you adjourn.
Excuse me, board members. Stay folks in the gallery. If you want to have a conversation, please have it outside the doors because if it's in the hallway, you can still hear it on the TV camera in here.
You go. The chair and vice chair.
I just had one question. We, I'd like to set a date for starting the review of the development regs.
Sure.
But I know our next meeting is very busy.
Why don't you set it for May 8th? Because it looks like it's a light agenda at this point. Just come back with these folks.
Okay.
We can start it on May 8th.
Yeah, start putting it on there.
Now, do you all still have your copy? I mean, I know you probably don't have one. Have the new development regulations.
The red one, the red one.
No, the...
The draft.
The draft copy, okay.
Tim might not have it.
Tim wouldn't have, Josh wouldn't have them. But does everyone else have them?
Yeah, I have to look. I should.
I don't agree.
Oh, yeah, looks like he might have.
Development...
Yeah, the other one, though, that's just a staple.
The yellow one.
Yeah, this one.
Yeah.
You, but you, but that's...
Patty must have given them.
Is that the draft?
I had gotten the draft.
Yeah, it looks like it's, it's red, redlined, so.
Oh, okay.
No, that's what's weird about this, is it says November, but it's not redlined. I didn't understand when I saw this. It was... It was all black and white.
It says draft on the inside, it just, it says draft October 24th.
But there's no red line on yours, are there?
Well, no, they're not redlined. Remember, that was the problem.
Is that what you decided to do?
Because HTA chopped it up so much that it.
It would make sense to redline.
If you went from a red line to.
Oh, you put a computer.
It was very confusing.
That's what you ultimately ended on, because at one point, we had red lines, and I wondered.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there a soft copy anywhere that shows the red lines?
I can check.
It's very red.
I don't think you want to see the red lines, because it's going to be such a confusing period of lines.
It's really like a whole new document that.
I can give you one of my old development regulation books.
A lot of things have been changed, and the way we do things are changed, and.
If anyone's interested, we can send the Word doc.
That's what I was asking for.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can look for that. I know I still have it.
On May 8th, we'll be discussing the changes that are in this.
I, I almost think the way we should go about doing this, because it's been such a change, is maybe attack it section by section, that we just sit here and go through it. It's going to be painful, but I think it's the only way to get everyone engaged and make sure that everyone's on board, and we can all have input into new changes. You know, this started before I was even here, so, you know, Sarah had input in it. I went back. Eric's had a ton of input. Joanne has, so it's, it's been a long time coming. And then HTA, like I said, they took our red lines and basically, kind of, yeah, it was.
So, why don't we talk about how it's set up as compared to the other one? Because there were some changes in the whole way it was set up, right?
Yeah, it's kind of, the sections have changed. I think the numbering of them have changed. They might have, they've moved the order of some of them.
So, if we can talk about sort of what we're hoping to do with the new organization, and maybe what the steps are for approval before we actually start talking about the specs, maybe that would help us get familiar with the whole plan, and then we could pick specific sections to review.
Okay. So, you're talking, talk structure first?
Talk structure first.
Okay.
And the, and the process. So, that's really, the beginning is through section four.
Okay.
Because that's all just process. That's not technical stuff in there.
Yeah, I don't know how much of that changed. I know some of it did, but.
I know, but we have, you know.
But I think, I think that's a part that probably could have some fat trimmed, or even we could, every time I look at this, there's like something that I think I want to change, so.
When you, when you emailed that thing to Josh, the Word document to Josh, did you?
Yeah, I'll send it to.
Yeah, Joanne, yeah. She's, she's got the master file. So, I even have a file on my computer of this with new additions that I want, so I got to, I got to bring that in, so then I can bring those to everyone's attention when we get to them. Just because since you've received this, as I'm reviewing something, it's like, oh, that's dumb.
And then we do have updates from the fire department on the system, but also on some other regulations that are in there for fire.
There's stuff that's just not clear.
Since we have your captain.
That's why, that's why we wanted to fix it.
And if it's not clear, there's way for people to skirt around stuff, so.
Barbara, you're proposing that we go just to section four, and that's it.
Start section four. It's, it's, there's process in it.
And make sure the process is solid, and then once we know the process is solid, then start breaking down the technical sections.
Right, and it'll give people a chance to gear up and start thinking about it. This has been years getting worked on, years.
Sure. I think that makes sense to me.
I've been here almost four years, and it started before I was here, so.
Motion to adjourn. No, we have one other thing. Unless you want to wait for Colleen's to be here, we have not had election of officers since the vote, since the, since the town vote in March, so we can put it off for another meeting, so we have a full board.
I'm fine with nominating you as chair and Colleen as vice chair with her not being here.
Is she fine with that?
I don't know. It wasn't on my agenda, so I wasn't really thinking about it, but I hadn't thought about any need to change it.
If you want to move forward, we can do that, and we can give, give her the right to refuse at a meeting, and then have a new vice chair elected if she agrees.
Okay, so I made that motion.
Second.
Please note for the record that her ability to refuse is not part of the motion.
Well, that's what she gets for not being here.
She's sick.
She could have called, then.
Our high water.
We don't do that.
Okay, we have the motion to, to have Tim continue as the chair, and Colleen continue as the vice chair by Barbara. Who seconded that motion?
Tim.
Tim.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion passes. Phil?
Motion to adjourn. Already made it.
Second.
Who seconded that one?
Tim.
Right on it.
All right, I bear. No seconding tonight?
Tim's in training for second.
It's really the only thing I know how to do. Aye, nay, abstain, that's really all I got.
They'll figure it out.
Before.
When it comes to motions, it seems pretty technical. We have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion passes. Thank you, GTVGR, adjourn.